How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing well.
I remembered to hit record.
Here we are, we're being recorded.
Um, I don't know why, but the, and the waiting room was enabled and I don't know how to shut it off. I don't know if that was done, if that's a new security update or. So everyone that shows up unless they're a host or a co-host, I have to let them in.
If. Can you make me a co-host and I'll?
You are a co-host. I mean, I think it's fine if, if you and I are both monitoring the participant list. We just have to.
Sorry, did I use the wrong link?
No.
Nope.
Cause normally are we just as a purchase as a, I'm not on screen unless you.
With us, you're always on screen unless, yeah.
So really?
Yeah, we use webinars for, for these meetings.
Oh.
Yeah. So you have to turn, you, yeah.
I can turn off my.
You can turn yourself off. Yeah.
I'll do that.
Jake, did you set up this, um, Zoom meeting?
I think Stacy did. What, what do we need to do?
For some reason I can't shut off the, um, waiting room. It's enabled, so I have to let everybody in.
Let me see. Yeah, I, I would have to go into my profile. I'll keep an eye on that as the meeting starts.
Okay, thank you.
Throughout, yeah. I don't, I don't know how to undo that once we've started.
Yeah, it may be it's a new setting. I don't know if we recently updated Zoom, but it may just be sort of a safety thing, a, a security thing. I don't know.
I'll keep an eye.
Thank you.
Yep. Did you let Joelle in?
I did.
Oh, okay. All right.
Hi, Joelle.
Hey, Joelle. We're just trying to figure out like, we don't usually have the waiting room setting on for these meetings, but it's on tonight. So we're.
I'm in.
Okay. Hey, Julia.
Julia, we're down one school committee member tonight, so it won't impact our voting order, but it will impact other people.
Who's not able to make it?
Curtis is not feeling well.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Hi Ursula, hi Carrie.
Hi, everyone.
Hi Christina, it's Steve calling in on my cell. I'll be transferring to the iPad in a little bit.
Okay, Steve, I had a feeling that was you. Thank you. Hi Jose.
Christina, did you say something to me or sorry?
I, I said hello. Um, just so everyone knows, Curtis will not be attending tonight. He is not feeling well. I think all of the school committee members are here, so. We can get started unless you're waiting for anyone, Jake.
Um, we just need, I think Cindy and she just, just got let in.
Great.
And I will keep an eye in the waiting room.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are recording. Um, I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at six P M. We are meeting virtually via Zoom. This meeting will take place virtually pursuant to the law signed by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, an act extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, which includes an extension until April first, twenty twenty-two of the remote meeting provision of his March twelfth, twenty twenty executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This meeting will be broadcast on Willie Net TV channel, channel thirteen oh two in Williamstown and posted to the Mount Greylock YouTube page within twenty-four hours of the meeting. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Um, first on our agenda is public comment. I do not have anyone signed up for public comment. I do see a few, um, members of the public out there, so raise your hand if you'd like to make public comments. Stephanie Boyd, if you would like to make comment, if you could, um, just state your name, your town, and the agenda item that you're commenting on.
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I'm from Williamstown and I wanted to comment on the finance committee report, the artificial turf field, grass turf field. Do I make my comment now?
Um, so you're speaking to the finance subcommittee report agenda item? Yes.
Yep. So, well firstly, I would really love to thank the finance committee. I attended their meeting in December when they voted to support a grass field, a natural grass field at Greylock, which I think is just such a, a right, I, um, path to follow and just a really good decision for the school. And I also had meant to share a survey that I had conducted and just like the month got away from me, but maybe I could just give you a little update. I put together a little survey based on questions from the school committee at a previous meeting, uh, wanting some input from the community and uh, about a hundred and twenty people responded to the survey that I emailed to people and put on social media, et cetera. And approximately eighty-eight people made unstructured comments. And of those eighty-eight comments, I think only two, um, spoke in favor of artificial turf and the rest of them either wanted more information or more predominantly felt that, uh, artificial turf was not the right choice for our school. And I'll just share a few of those comments with you. Uh, one, it seems short sighted to use artificial turf, perhaps cheaper in the short run, but much more expensive in the long run in terms of maintenance, not to mention environmental and health damage. This is a matter of public health and wellbeing and the public should be consulted on it. It's outrageous that this continues to be a debate when children's health and long-term environmental effects are at stake. Another commenter said, I already know the pros and cons of turf fields and I'm absolutely opposed to having an artificial turf field installed at the high school or anywhere in town. This debate has been going on for some time now and there has been more than adequate information broadcast in town. Uh, I'm not in favor of artificial turf for our kids and I'm disappointed with this process thus far. Please, let's move forward together and let's put our kids' health and our impact on the environment at the forefront. Another says, I can't believe artificial turf is even being seriously considered. It's just ridiculous in this time where we know about how plastics are getting into everything. Another says, I would like to see better public communication about why an artificial turf would be the highest priority to spend these funds and what other academic and extracurricular goals might compete for those funds. I would like also an explanation of how this proposal could possibly be in alignment with Williamstown's net zero resolution. Another says, artificial turf sounds like a terrible decision. It runs counter to needs and to the environmental stewardship. What is the benefit? Another person says, we have a plastic glock on our planet. When we have a choice, let's not choose to make it worse. I strongly oppose the plan to use artificial turf. Under no circumstances should our high school build an artificial turf field. I cannot fathom why anyone is considering installing an artificial turf field today. So I'll stop there, but, um, uh, there were many more. Oops. Did I get, uh, disappeared? We didn't hear you. Oh, sorry. I pressed a button. I can't see you guys now or whatever I've done. Oh, there we go. I'll stop there just to give you a sense of some of the comments and I'm more than happy to forward all of them, uh, to you tomorrow. I'm sorry, I didn't do that in advance, but I'm really, really proud and happy that this school committee is, um, hopefully moving forward with a grass field. Thank you very much for all your service to our community.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up for public comment. I will just give one more moment to make sure. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, um, on our agenda, which is the student representative update. Uh, so I will turn over to Molly Sullivan. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me again. Um, so, uh, we're back in school, obviously from the break. Um, the school musical is in full swing and the cast list is, um, available and there are certain rehearsals. Um, also winter sports are in full swing and we have midterms coming up, um, a week from next Monday, so that's exciting. Um, in terms of, uh, some of the student councils, um, kind of main areas that we're focusing on right now, we did, um, meet with Dover Sherburne High School. Um, we met with their, uh, student council reps and we talked to them about, um, their changing start, um, time. And we also met with Dr. McCandless and Mr. Bergeron about, um, possibly, you know, what, what, what would be the, the other parameters, um, and what would look like to change ours. Um, we found with Dover Sherburne that they, um, they have this flex direct study period last and, um, their school starts at eight thirty-five and they end at two thirty-seven. Um, and the last period is, um, a little bit of a gray area. So underclassmen have a directed study and then, um, athletes and, um, any other people who are doing extracurriculars would have them during that period of time. Um, and it would kind of be like a slot, um, so that you could start things, um, and get, you know, outdoor sports and other things over before dark. Um, and they said that they felt that there are only positives in the long term and they had a, a sleep specialist come and do a presentation at their school, um, to talk about that. So, um, that was a positive thing for student council. Um, we did send out a survey to the students, um, but it, uh, it, the results were still coming in and it was very, um, kind of like one grade oriented. So we're trying to kind of push that out, um, beyond what we, what the results we had. Um, the student council is running a community book drive. Um, we just started on Monday. Um, so we have, um, a box in the library at Mount Greylock, um, for used books. And we're going to donate them to a Berkshire County Jail and House of Correction and a local shelter. Um, there are also boxes located at Williamson Elementary and Lanesboro Elementary and the Lanesboro Town Hall. So we're trying to kind of push it out to the community. Um, so if anyone has used books, um, we would really appreciate that. We're going to try to get kind of all the towns involved and, um, lots of books. Um, and it can be all genres of books and, and February seventh, so we should have a good amount of time to kind of get that, um, in swing. So we're really excited about that. And then, um, the last kind of update from student council is we're looking to maybe bring back some, um, alumni through Zoom, uh, for speakers, kind of like, um, just to type, like maybe former student council presidents or just other, um, students that from our school that have, you know, kind of explored new areas, um, in the new, um, years that they've been out of high school. So, um, Register Educate Vote, the club had, um, two former rev, uh, members, uh, Charlie McQueeney, who you all know, and Maddie R. at the meeting the other night. Um, and they spoke a little bit about what they've been up to. Um, and then student council is hoping to bring back some more, but that's just a small update. Um, we were hoping to push that out to the community as well, but, um, yeah, that's all I have.
Ursula, do you have a question for Molly?
I do. Just a quick question about the book drive and you may have mentioned it, but, uh, where should the books be brought physically to donate?
Yeah, so we, yeah, so there, there's, um, like cardboard boxes. There's, um, two at Williamson Elementary, two at Lanesboro Elementary, um, one at the Lanesboro Town Hall and then one at Mount Greylock High School. So I don't think you can enter the building, but you can send them with a Mount Greylock student or drop them off at any of the other locations around, um, the town.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I'm also happy to come pick up books if you want to email me. I'm happy to, um, grab them or find a time to meet somewhere. I, because we'd love to get as many as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Any other questions from the committee for Molly? All right. Thanks Molly. Have a great night.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, next up on the agenda is approval of minutes. Um, first we have the December ninth, twenty twenty-one minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the December ninth, twenty twenty-one minutes?
So moved.
Carrie moves. Do I have a second?
Ursula, second.
Ursula seconds. Okay, discussion. Um, I just wanted to point out one thing that just needed a little clarity because I was a tiny bit confused on it. Page six, um, the first paragraph under the COVID nineteen update. There's a sentence in here that says, there is a concern that Williamstown's vaccination administrators will follow up with staff and families to encourage vaccinating. And that sentence doesn't really make sense and I'm not really sure what it was supposed to say. I don't know if anybody remembers. Joe?
I believe the sentiment was that the committee expressed concerns with the vaccination rate that was being reported for Williamstown Elementary. And they encouraged the administration to follow up on that topic.
Okay, great. Try to make that, um, correction. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Owen, I.
Conry, I.
Constancy, I.
Green, I.
Ursula, are you there?
Thought I unmuted. Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Okay, yes, thank you. That motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda is the January fourth, twenty twenty-one's, January fourth special session minutes, and I need to point out that it's incorrect on the agenda. It shouldn't say twenty twenty-two. Um, but it is correct, um, in the minutes, but I just wanted to point that out. So, do I have a motion to approve the January fourth, twenty twenty-two special session minutes?
Miller, move.
Okay, Miller moves. I did, Carrie, were you the second? That was Ursula.
It was Ursula.
Okay, thank you.
Or was it Julia? It was Julia. Sorry.
I, I did say it, but Ursula may have as well. I did say it as well, so whatever.
So, Miller moves, Ursula seconds. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constancy, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda are principal updates and it looks like first we'll hear from Williamstown Elementary and so I will turn it over to Cindy Sheehy.
Thanks Christina. Do I have the ability to share my screen?
I can certainly give that to you.
Cindy.
Should be all set.
All right. So far it's not letting me share my screen, so I'm going to keep talking anyway. Jake, do you, can you share my budget presentation for me? Thank you. Well, it's been an exciting couple of weeks at Williamstown Elementary School. Um, I still, we're desperately continuing to try to bring some of the fun back. Um, in programming and in this most unusual year, things may look a little different, but nevertheless, we are continuing to try to bring things back the way, you know, our kids are hoping to see things. And to that end, um, we are in full swing of having math club, being able to have Lego robotics after school as well as our after-school tutoring program, um, which we're really excited about. Um, one of the biggest additions has been able to do adventures and learning with our partnership with Williams College and the Center for Learning in Action. So we're two weeks into that, which has been really incredible for our students. They are engaged in a variety of activity, activities, anything from learning to write comic books, but they're also doing things like baking, learning a different language. There's frisbee being taught in the hallway. So we're pretty excited that despite this incredibly unusual time, we are desperately clinging to what can we continue to do to bring back the fun and some, some more of the normal, whatever normal might look like at this point, um, to our kids. And I'm really grateful to Williams College and the Center for Learning in Action for being able to partner with us to give this opportunity to our kids because it's something we really missed last year. So I'm excited that we were able to do it this year. Um, our sixth grade students are in full swing, um, of their auditions for the musical at the end of the school year. The sixth graders will be performing Shrek. Right now, our music teacher, Betsy Reali, is really in the midst of talking to the kids about what it looks to perform a musical. Our sixth grade students are pretty excited. She's got a good turnout, um, Monday through Thursday for auditions and learning parts. And it never ceases to amaze me, the ability these children have to get up on stage and sing and dance in front of all of their peers. And that's truly a reflection of the program that has been embedded at that school from when the kids are really little. So I'm grateful to Betsy and also all of the help she's got since college students who are there as well, working with our sixth graders. Um, we are going to continue to keep our fingers crossed that maybe by year end, when we get to perform this musical, that maybe it won't be over Zoom, but we are going to proceed with caution as we have all year with all of the things. But right now our kids are, are doing an incredible job and they're really excited about getting started with this musical. And, and as Molly mentioned, you know, Williamstown is participating in the book drive for the Mount Greylock Student Council. Our kids are really excited about bringing in books. Um, you know, I made the announcement this morning when Molly dropped off the boxes and those, you know, boxes that are outside of my office are already filled with books. So it's always exciting to see our students not only rally to support their peers and their community at Mount Greylock, but just for the greater good of our community and provide resources that some families or some individuals might not have access to. So always a good partnership that we can, you know, look forward to doing together. As we start this budget presentation tonight, I think this is definitely my first go at doing a budget presentation. And I think when I'm looking at this, you know, creating what are the things that we think we need as a school right now. And this is definitely a road over the next several months that I really look forward to prioritizing budget items, not only with the faculty, but also in conjunction with the superintendent, with the business manager to see what are the needs, where are we really going to prioritize those things? So if we can go ahead and take a look, Dr. McCandless.
Can you see it? Is it up there?
I can see it. Yeah.
Okay.
So first thing in breaking up our, you know, the Williamstown budget, taking a look at three major areas that I, you know, I'm looking at, not only things in the immediate future for next year, but also a lot of these things are things that I want to, you know, keep mentioning that are going to be things over the long term that I want, you know, the school committee to kind of keep in mind. Um, and that involves long-term capital improvements, staffing needs, and then a section on instructional and programmatic needs. Um, capital improvements. Um, and again, these are things that I know I'm not expecting for next year, but it's something I want to continue to remind the committee um, of things we are looking at, you know, in the future, which is replacing the flooring throughout the building, replacing the windows, um, replacing the fire panel and alarm. And then the last one of playground maintenance and accessibility. I know that the previous administration had done a lot of legwork to really look at our playground accessibility and what it would look like to make our playground more inclusive, looking at different surfaces and different structures. And so that's something that is definitely, you know, on the forefront of my mind. Um, the other items that you see here have not been replaced since the building was first built. Um, and it, uh, it is definitely something to be noted, especially with things like our fire panel and alarm. Um, those two pieces are obsolete. So if something were to break in the fire panel or the alarm system, we would kind of, it would force our hand to have to replace a fire panel and alarm because the parts are no longer made for those two things. So just kind of in big picture terms, that's what we'd be looking at over the next bunch of years that the elementary school would need. Um, staffing, the staffing needs, you know, this is again, as I mentioned, something that if I'm looking at my current students, my current staff that's in front of me, what can I see as needs going forward? We currently have a special education teacher who's a point five F T E. Going forward into the next school year, I would love to see that position increase to a full-time one point O F T E. Um, the next one, an additional social adjustment counselor. We were able, able to bring a social adjustment counselor onto our school staff two years ago, which was incredible. And what we're finding is, you know, we are a school that is growing what feels like exponentially. We went from three hundred and seventy-four students last year to, you know, we're at four hundred and twenty-five and still enrolling this year. And what our goal is, is to continue to meet the needs of our students' social and emotional development in the best way that we possibly can. Um, right now, our school social adjustment counselor is an incredible resource. She's able to meet with kids. She's able to do kind of small-scale lunch bunch types of activities, but for a school of Williamstown size, I'd love to see us be able to bring an additional social adjustment counselor on board to really be able to not only meet the needs of the students and the staff, but to be able to do programmatic things in the area of social emotional learning that would allow our counselors to push into classrooms and allow them to teach lessons and allow those lunch bunch and social development skills to happen on a larger scale, rather than right now. Um, it often feels a little bit as if the social adjustment counselor is, you know, meeting with students on an as need basis, which is great, but we also want to make sure that everyone has access to what they might possibly need in the school day. Um, the next one, an occupational therapist. Our occupational therapist currently is a point six F T E. I'd love to see that increase to a one point O. Um, that's primarily based on two big things. And one of that is the needs of our students, that we have students that we know need occupational. That's primarily based on two big things, and one of that is the needs of our students, that we have students that we know need occupational therapist services. The other piece is, in our current model, our occupational therapist does not have five minutes in her day in order to service students, but also to do that critical piece of providing consultations and providing observations and meeting with staff, which is just equally as valuable for her position. And it's something she and I have talked about a lot. She does a lot of work on the weekends, writing plans, writing assessments, because the ability to do any of that during her school day and have valuable conversations with staff just doesn't exist in the current model. And the next one, Jake, if you can advance the slide. An additional reading specialist. Again, this goes to the size of Williamstown Elementary School. We currently have one reading specialist on staff for our 425 students. You know, in any given year, when I was the reading specialist just two years ago, I was servicing 76 students. In order to do it well, and in order to provide services to any child who requires reading support, you know, one of the models I would love to be able to do is have a reading specialist provide support at K2, and then a different reading specialist provide support at our upper grades in grades three through six. It allows us the ability not only to meet the needs of the students, but also the vital piece of being able to do assessments and data and hold valuable data meetings with the staff. It's incredibly important. It's something that we're looking at not only as an additional position, but also we're looking at this as a schedule change where we're trying to really infuse more time in our schedule for all of our students, whether you need an intervention or an enrichment, that we're providing that time within our school day. The big one on here, as far as a new one, I'd love, we're going to talk about it in the next slide as well, but a student support center, a paraprofessional. We are looking at the possibility of trying to create a student support center in Williamstown Elementary School. And in order for us to do that and also do it well, we want that room or that program to really be staffed and have a paraprofessional within the program to be able to support students who need a break during the day, need a minute in a sensory location, or just need, you know, a second to take a break from the day or whatever might be challenging them at the moment. I think, you know, what we're always finding, whether it's this year or in another year, it's that our students are really coming to us with more and more things that, you know, are struggling to make them access the curriculum. And those are all of those social emotional things that we're really, you know, wanting to be able to support our students with. And being able to have a student support center would allow our students and our staff to have a space for students to go to, for students to be able to take a break, to take a sensory walk, to be able just to take a minute and have a space in the school where they can be calm, where they can, you know, just be able to collect themselves and be able to talk to a trusted adult, and then be able to go back into their classroom and, you know, engage in curriculum and engage with peers. And then lastly, the instructional and programmatic needs. As I mentioned, the creation of a staff student support center. A big thing for us this year is the continued professional development. I know Nolan and I have talked a lot about, you know, looking at our professional development together collectively. It's something that's important to us, that we're, you know, looking at our tools, schools, and providing shared experiences for our staff. And a continued theme that comes up is the ability to give all of our staff members instruction on universal design for learning. You know, what are best practices for all learners? What are the best ways to differentiate whether a student needs remediation or enrichment? But just generally speaking, what's good practice for all students? What do all students benefit from? We're hoping to continue with our Witten Wisdom implementation. This has been a really interesting year trying to implement a new curriculum. I'm grateful to the staff for putting forth the effort. It's always a challenge to try and start something new. And it's something, you know, we've really had the opportunity to work with the trainers from Witten Wisdom and have them take a look at what our needs are and be able to craft professional development towards what we see our staff needs. And we're looking to continue that partnership to make our staff have the ability to access, you know, what are things that are going to make them stronger in implementing this program? And it's work that we want to continue through next year. We definitely don't want to roll out a program this year and then not have any support in place next year, because, you know, we recognize that this is an ongoing program. Also, ongoing DEIB work, it's something we continue to talk about, but it's, you know, we're really continuing to look at making sure that we're providing shared experiences for all of our staff, not just, you know, one group or another group, but it's something at a curriculum level, at classroom libraries, but also at having those discussions. Those are all things that we would like to continue to have throughout next school year. You've heard in different meetings along the school year about the math curriculum. And when I'm talking about math curriculum, it's not something that I'm looking for for next school year, but it is something that I want as a reminder that it's kind of coming down the pipe. What I would love to see happen is to start to be able to put together a committee where we're able to give staff a stipend, so that they can start to really examine a variety of math curriculum, so that we can start that process of seeing what is it that we might want to use. We were able to do it really effectively with both, you know, Lanesboro and Williamstown teachers and staff to do the new reading curriculum, and it's something we'd like to see with this math curriculum. In order for us to adopt anything, you know, it really is at least a full years-long process to do the research and do the work. And it's something that I want us to kind of start moving down that path of being able to look at. All right, I think that is it. Are there questions? Jose.
Thanks, Cindy. I can't see myself, so I don't know what, whether my hand was up or not, but I did have a question. I have a few questions, but a few relating to the budget presentation that you just gave us. But the first one is is one that I wanted to ask you that's related to some concerns that parents have had. And I'll preface it by saying, as we all know, and I certainly know that, you know, what we ask of our teachers is the impossible, and then some. And then what I also know is, you know, the pandemic has introduced such stresses to our learning environment and the situation that our teachers and staff and students have to have to deal with on a daily basis. But the question I have, Cindy, is that there's some concerns about breaches in COVID safety protocols at Williamstown Elementary concerning face masks. And so the question would be to you is, you know, or the request, I guess, I have is, is could you speak to those parents about what our current protocols are? Whether this is a real, this should be a real concern for our parents. And if so, what is being done to address that? Thanks.
Right, so Jose, good question. Oh, sorry, Joe or Jake, were you going to jump in?
Well, I was going to suggest that it's following the rules of our meetings. It's best if we stay on a topic that's on the agenda. And Cindy, you can certainly answer this, but just for future reference, I think.
Apologies, Jake. I thought there was a brief summary of what was going on at West. That's what I thought was happening at the beginning, but I'm happy.
Or Jose.
Sorry, I was just going to make a suggestion. Jake, you have a COVID update or a health update later in the agenda? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, Jose, maybe hold that until the superintendent's report, if that would be okay with you.
Yeah, absolutely. And apologies, Cindy. I didn't mean to usurp the budget presentation. But I figured I might as well, you know, just get it out there, the concern that some parents have. In that case, I'll wait, you know. I think the question is noted, and I can re-ask it, but then I'll just ask, I think the presentation you gave us, Cindy, is excellent, as we're getting accustomed to from you in very good ways. But the few questions I have are regarding whether you were able to get input from the PTO in identifying the needs and desires for Williamstown Elementary.
Yeah, it's a great question, and I think right now we are definitely getting input from all stakeholders and being able to. And that's part of, you know, as I said at the beginning, this is really a, I would say, a baseline kind of overview of what we're looking at. And as we're going through this budget season in the next couple of months, it gives us the opportunity, now that faculty has kind of weighed in, we've had members of the community, it will also allow us to take other members, you know, of our school community to see, you know, what their thoughts are as well. Julia?
Also, thank you, Cindy. That was thorough, and your rationale for each item is very much understood. I have a question for you that I'm not sure is wholly for you. It might also be, end up being really for Joe and Jake. But if I add up the FTEs that you are looking for, I think it adds up to 4.9. Every one of which, I understand why they're needed. And I appreciate that Williamstown Elementary is growing, and so I can, you know, imagine that there's, you know, greater need just to serve more students. And we've got three schools and hopefully some district level, you know, potentially some district level positions that we've talked about in the past that we may add. So I'm just, I guess, if we can't afford all of these, and this may be a really hard question, but where are the places we could give? Where's the, like, ability to say, okay, we can probably do without this one?
Right, and I think it's a great question. I think one of the biggest things in developing this budget is, you know, as I'm already looking at staffing for next year, there's different areas where we already know that there's certain grade levels that we'll have to reduce in classrooms. And so some of those positions that are listed as FTEs are not necessarily brand-new budget items, but more a reallocation of a current staff member's role or responsibility within our current structure. We have, which is kind of one of the things that makes it a little bit unique, because we will be looking at, you know, there's a couple of different grade levels where they have four sections right now, but because of the enrollment, might move down to three. And we know that, and we've known that kind of coming down the pike, and it gives us that flexibility to potentially move some of our current staff members into some of these other roles, which is something we're really looking forward to if possible.
Okay, so 4.9 is not net increase?
No, no, no.
And when you say you might be able to move forward with three sections, those students then move up a grade? Does that mean they're just going to have larger class sizes?
No, it just happens to be, the way our current structure is, our largest class sizes are at third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. But however, our younger grades are much smaller, so we're still able to maintain those small class sizes. But we just simply, like, for example, at one grade level, we have 62. At another one, we have 41. So it's a vast difference in the actual number of students. And I think, you know, to go back to your question about where can we kind of give, and if we can't do the full FTEs, you know, I think for me, if I'm looking at what really makes a difference and what I'm really hoping for, that addition of a social adjustment counselor is really important, but also being able to potentially examine moving that special education position from a .5 to a 1.0. But again, so much of this, this is really, you know, at the beginning of this process. And as we continue over the next couple of months, it will really give us the opportunity to take a look at the students in front of us, and where might we really be able to make the most impact for the students in front of us? Carrie?
Thanks, Cindy, and thanks, Julia, for asking the question about prioritizing. That's, that was one of my concerns about the sheer number of staff we were talking about there. But I'm wondering, Cindy, what the role of the School Governance Council has been and will be moving forward, and if this is an opportunity to just talk about how well that's working this year in particular.
Right, and I think it's an excellent question. I think definitely that is one of the areas that I particularly and personally am trying to grow, walking into being able to take the school council and add more members to it to try and get more feedback from the community, but also internally with staff. Historically, just in my short time, it has been a very, very, very small committee, and some of my members have moved on to the high school, so it's something that I'm growing as we speak, because it's important to me to try and get representation and information from not just parents and staff, but also that community base as well. And so I'm looking forward to that being, you know, a continued kind of renewed presence within our school. I, you know, I've been able to reach out to Jake Schutz a lot. I know his school council looks a lot different than what mine does, and that's what I'm hoping for us to be working and moving towards, that it's not a small body of people, but instead is much larger to incorporate everybody's, you know, feedback and opinions. Steve?
Yes, thank you. So not surprisingly, the item I wanted to ask about was about the math, and I was, you know, very excited to see that. I hope some other subjects will also be in the pipeline to be looked at in the future. And I just wanted to comment that I hope that there'll be conversations with the middle school, high school about bringing back a program we had years ago, where sixth graders were able to do Algebra I at Mount Greylock. So, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, next up is the Mount Greylock Regional School FY23 budget, and I will turn it over to Jacob Schutz.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So I'm going to share my screen as well, as long as I have permission. It looks like I do. All right. So for our Mount Greylock's School Council Budgetary implication presentation, here, you're going to see this year's goals. Much of the work of the school council is centered around the school improvement plan. This plan, we identify goals, objectives, and action steps. Oftentimes, this plan builds upon one another, and often the priority goal rises to the top. This year, we've identified the academic achievement goal as being that goal that has risen to the top. And logically, that is where we have identified some possible budgetary implications. So here, you can read the content of the academic goal and its objective. So while you're reading that, I'd like to first mention some important stats and then set them aside for the rest of the presentation. At Mount Greylock, our students have excellent PSAT scores, SAT scores, AP scores. We have amazing graduation rates. Our college acceptance rates are outstanding. The colleges which our students choose to attend and the careers and professions which our graduates choose to enroll are honest and noble and impressive. Our MCAS scores on average are, in comparison to other schools and across the state, are very well. And for all that, we're glad and we're proud of our staff and of our students. And with this in mind, and with the understanding that every student is our priority, we continuously look to hone our craft and to seek ways to improve the academic skills of all our students. This includes our struggling students. So here, we're going to take a deeper dive and try to identify how we can better identify those struggling students and develop supports for them. So looking at areas of improvement. Here, again, looking to expand academic opportunities, we focused on English and math. In addition to the school council, our curriculum leaders, our department heads, I'm sorry, our departments, our student support team staff, our counselors as a whole, all support this endeavor as far as moving towards supporting this basic language acquisition and a command of basic mathematics to, that'll better support, you know, the fundamental access to all other areas of the curriculum. And it seems clear that the pandemic And it seems clear that the pandemic only exacerbated these existing needs. The top bullet, you'll see items number one and number two are where our data sets are going to specifically identify these, these students and the area of needs. And the data sets below are what we, what we use to drive the, the scores. So with the caveat that on, that on average, our student population is amazing. I'll cut to the chase and let you know that essentially, we're going to be requesting two FTEs, one for a math interventionist, math coach, and one for a reading specialist, reading interventionist. So on to reading first. So looking informally at grades, low scores are unusually low over the past few years when compared to other cohorts, often significantly exceeding marginal failure and instead representing vast skill deficits. Our formative assessments point to lower percentage of students able to read and answer comprehensive questions and comprehension of complex test texts is low. We also have a high level of disengagement and distraction, whether this is from technology or just general distraction. So you'll see, and the first bullet here is just a simple breakdown of failing grades by quarter and by year from 2018 to 2021. And the second bullet we're going to look at, and we'll go into the second bullet. We'll do a deep dive in the next slide. Showing how economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities, how they have scored significantly lower than state average and significantly more questions than their counterparts. So that subset, the subset which I just mentioned of high needs, that's a combination of students who are considered economically disadvantaged or those students who have a disability over the past three years of testing. And you can note, there's no 2020 because there was no MCAS testing in 2020. So this is MCAS data. This is raw data straight from MCAS. Grades, these are from grades seven through 12. So the number of questions indicates how many questions scored below the state average. The number of students represent the total number of students in that category. And you'll see the amount of questions of our high needs population scored below state average versus the number of questions of all students. So I just, in this slide, essentially, I'm just pointing out the discrepancy. And then if we look at this next slide, this is the aggregate. This is essentially taking a step back and looking at the success rate, the overall scores. E stands for not accelerated, exceeding. M is for meeting, PM is partially meeting, and MN is for needs. Nearly meeting. And anyways, in 2018, they were the old indicators. So it was advanced proficient needs improvement and failures, essentially the same ranking, they just changed the changed the terminology. So the clear takeaway here is that our high need students, the ones on the right hand side in the PM or NM columns are much higher percentages than their, than the all student counterparts. So quickly transitioning, transitioning to mathematics. So the first, first bullet is the this is the basic geometry and algebra. So eight to 15 students in grades nine through 12 have been identified as needing additional support and foundational skills. And we'll get into this in the following slides, but this has been derived from MCAS and benchmarking data. The second bullet, which I'll speak about a little bit here, but not get into on later slides. This is direct instruction below our program grade levels. So essentially, this is programming for students that require instructions at grade levels that we do not offer. And we offer instruction in grade levels from seven through 12. So this, this is courses. So so this would be courses for students that require grade level below seventh grade math. Identification here comes from diagnostic testing or from testing that students come in with from psychoeducational evaluations from outside providers or psychologists. Sometimes we do that testing. Oftentimes, we found that students have been coming into district with, with these evaluations. And actually, this year, we had to develop one of these courses mid-year based on, based on student need. And because of the low numbers of the students in this class, I'm not going to, I won't get into any other, any other details just because of a potentially identifying factors. So here is where I mentioned the 30 students across the board in grades nine through 11 that may require additional support and foundational skills. So in addition, in addition to teacher observations and general assessments, our math department used a 33% correct as an over underscore value to highlight student success, essentially saying, if you scored 33% correct on either our benchmarking data, this is 33% out of 100, or 33% correct on the MCAS, that is a good reflection on whether you would pass the MCAS or not. Because in typical years, if you score around a 40% on the MCAS, you will pass the MCAS. And so with those standards in mind, as of the scores this year, we would have had 17 students in grade nine, 11 in grade 10, and eight in grade 11 that would have failed, that would need additional, that would have failed. So this is the cohort that we're saying needs additional foundational support in mathematics. In addition to a cohort of students that needs developmental support that isn't going away in the next, in the next couple of years. So as far as next steps, what it comes down to is dedicated professional hours. Working with students, whether it's one-on-one, whether it's in small groups, or whether it's programmatically, working with, working with teachers, working with departments, whether it is those developmental courses that that I've mentioned. And my vision would be a a combination of developmental courses sort of pull out with a main focus being on inclusion, pushing in, doing coaching, where those students, the cohorts that I've mentioned are essentially the targeted audience. However, everyone else in that included classroom is going to benefit. So even though the target is moving the students from the failing to the needs improvement or from the needs improvement to the partially meeting, those students from the partially meeting will get pushed up. The students in the meeting will get pushed up. So everybody's going to be benefit from this. It's not just something that, just that target audience would benefit from. And it's also a support to our faculty as far as introducing, introducing strategies and, and helping teachers prepare and introducing this guided sort of instruction. So this is sort of a continuation from the last slide. This concept essentially is going to become another tool, another resource. And it's a, it's a reintroduced resource. We've had reading strategists or reading, reading teachers in the past, reading interventionists in the past. And it seems like there's, it's just time to bring them back in that continuum of support. So the needs of the students require interventionists. Wes and Les do a fantastic job with their interventionists. And I would make the argument that the, that support doesn't end at sixth grade. That it's a, it's a continuation and that even though our, our teachers are amazing at meeting students where they are and helping them succeed. They are not reading interventionists, they're not reading specialists, and they're not math interventionists. The pandemic has highlighted that we need to do a better job at meeting our struggling students. And this proposal is a therapeutic approach to address those learning gaps and to help some of our most vulnerable students while also in kind supporting, you know, all our students. So pending any questions? I believe that's all I have. Julia?
I can't believe I'm going to ask this question after the question I asked Cindy. But I both, that, first of all, thank you. That was a lot of data that I, I don't know if we've seen such a data-driven presentation before. And I'm deeply grateful for the amount of work that must have run in to really zero in on the area. And so I just want to commend you for, for bringing that to us and, and sharing, you know, data about what we need to do.
It was, well, thank you. We actually, the, the school council helped me pare it down because there's, there's, there's a lot of data out there. And when you look at most of the data, most, you know, most any data you look at when it comes to score, academic scores in Mount Greylock, things always look great, things look good. And you need to do deep dives to see where, to identify any sort of trends to see where, where there are struggling students. And that's what a lot of the department curriculum leaders helped, the school council really helped to help find the support, to identify what the teachers have been saying for a while. So anyways, thanks.
So the, the question I have is, I had anticipated, given what I hear about what's happening in schools everywhere, what's happening in schools locally, I was a potential need for more social emotional support coming through the pandemic? And I just wondered, I'm not
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
I had anticipated a potential need for more social emotional support for our students. Certainly academic, but also coming out of the pandemic.
We, we, we doubled down, we like tripled down last year. I'm not saying that we are, we're good to go by any means, but we, we you know, the school council and the school committee really set us up to help our students last year. We added a school social worker last year. And with the Williams, Williams College Fund and with some C fund money, we were able to do teletherapy for many of our students. And so we, we had a lot of stuff, a lot of in-kind support already built in. So we are doing those things like we at the middle, at the seventh, eighth and ninth grade level, there are, you know, we've already adjusted our program of studies to have sort of mandatory SEW classes. So like, we have counselors in the classroom teaching SEW. So it's direct instruction in social emotional wellness. That is a change from last year based off of what we, what we saw. So we're not, we're not perfect, we're not there, but last year that was the push. And so we kind of saw that, you know, and it's all kind of connected anyways, so we just, I hope that answers your question.
It does, I appreciate that, thank you.
Steve? I can't hear you.
I wanted to thank you again for the detailed report. It really helps to get data like this to, you know, have a sense of what are the issues, what are the magnitudes, how much staff and support is needed. And I just wanted to echo what I said at the West Report is to make sure that we don't forget about these students in the other groups and just think about what we can do to make sure that we have resources in place to have, you know, classes and challenges appropriate for everyone at all levels. So thank you.
Thanks Steve.
Jake, it's hard to see, but Jose has his hand up, it gets lost in his background.
Sorry, Jose.
Thank you Christina, and thank you Jake. I'm going to lower, lower my virtual hand. You're, you're going to hear the echo chamber where you'll, you'll hear me also thank you for your report and for the data that you presented. One of the things that I guess came up for me is the, or questions that I have is regarding the two FTEs that you're requesting through this budget proposal, one for the math interventionists and one for the reading interventionists. And I think the, my, I guess my worry would be that the scale of the challenges faced at Greylock are bigger than those at the elementary school levels because the cohorts are just that much bigger. I lost track of the numbers that you presented and some of the data I had, you know, through first glance, it was hard for me to, to make sense of. Do you have a concern that you, that this request is, may not, may not be sufficient enough for the challenges that you see in students face at, at that school, at middle school and high school?
Will always take more if you want to give us more, but I'm, I'm comfortable with this because the, the, the concept isn't to have essentially these folks in a, in a corner with, with students just going to them. The idea is for them to build a culture and climate around reading and math intervention where, where, so say the reading strategist is going to be pushing into classrooms and helping teachers incorporate reading strategies that they have never thought of and that they can simply incorporate into their lesson plans and into their instruction. And it's like, so we're going to have this professional development coordinator sort of essentially working in the trenches with our teachers. You know, it's like having a, it's almost like a co-teacher who might be in your classroom, you know, every day or, you know, every period for a month. And then after that, maybe there, that person only needs to be in there, you know, one period every week. And so it's building the program around it. So I'm, I'm confident that with this inclusion sort of push in model that two folks would hopefully sort of help build this community of interventions and it's not just focused around the interventionists.
Got it. I've just got a quick follow-up Jake, in sort of a different kind of question, but it's all related to, you know, the request for, for resources. You know, there are concerns within both of our communities about the, the size of our budget requests to our respective towns. For folks who, who may be skeptical or concerned that the budget requests seem to grow on a yearly basis, what could you, would it be fair to say that with these requests met an expectation might be or should be that those MCAS numbers start to look different, at least on the NM like the, in the PM side? And, um, like the in the PM side of the the scale. Is that is that the the expectation? That we should see changes in the in 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 those scores?
That is, that is my hope. Um, and I'm I'm not a. You know, I'm not gonna fall on the MCAS sword. I think, um, but but that is, that is the essential, the the hope. Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. I don't see any other missed hands up. Oh, Julia. So that one.
Well, I was waiting because I don't think it's actually for you as much as it might be for Joe and Jake, um, as a quick reminder or quick reminder for me. Does the district come to the next meeting with other district level? Yes. Okay.
Yes, Julia.
Okay.
And and that is also when the the conversation of trade offs and and number realities. Really, really come to bear. I mean, I think what the principals have been talking about is they've they've been very nicely justifying what they hope for. Question is, how many pieces can we move around and how how can we make things work at the end of the day?
That's what you're saying, Joe.
Always.
I well, next year. I'm gonna ask for three.
I asked right, uh, Jake, Jake, Shuts, one other question for you is, and so is that, this is the question that Cindy responded to. Is is that two net? Increase or there any other positions that would go away?
These are, these would be brand new. There's no. Yeah, there's, there's no replacement. Like, I I don't know if you remember Carol Byrnes, maybe 12 years ago, think she was the last reading specialist.
And and there's, there are no other positions that are phasing out or retired. So, okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure we should say that as a as a definite. We may not know about retirements yet. We may not know, but those would. I mean, the assumption is retirements would be replaced, um, you know, if they're. Essential in current position. So is it fair to say that we're not? Quite sure what the answer to that question is right now?
Well, I can say I'm not expecting, uh, and and my proposal doesn't anticipate these positions replacing anybody. That's not my proposal. And I don't anticipate it. Right. Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, finance subcommittee report, and I will turn it over to the chair of that subcommittee, Carrie Green.
Okey doke. Um, so at the last school committee meeting. Which was December ninth, the school committee. Requested that the finance committee come back to the school committee with a recommendation about how to move forward with. The Fields Project. The finance committee has met twice with, um, Joe and with Jake. Our superintendent and, um. At the first meeting, which was on December 22nd. I think, um, that those minutes were in the packet. So I'm going to assume that the school committee has read through that report or those minutes. A proposal was made, um, by me to the rest of the finance subcommittee. Um, that proposal. Was approved, um, by a, uh, two in favor, one abstention. To move forward to the school committee. We'll talk about that in a minute. At this afternoon's finance subcommittee meeting, we talked about. Some of the questions that were, um, left kind of on the table at that point regarding playability. And, um. You know, some questions about cost and maintenance and and those kinds of things. Those minutes were forwarded to the school committee. You may or may not have a chance to. Have taken a look at those, uh, so far. So. With that said, um. There is a motion on the table. And I can. I can. Read that motion. Um, it only needs a second or I could. Read the proposal in full, um, that was sent to the finance subcommittee since that has not been. Delivered at a full school committee meeting. Um, what is the pleasure of the committee? Jose?
I raised my hand too quickly, Carrie, because I thought I knew what I was gonna ask you to do, and then I'm torn. But I I think I I wonder if we. The the finance subcommittee has already made the motion. If we second it, we can then hear the full proposal and have discussion. So maybe I'll, I'll. Could we hear the motion? Uh, and then that has been moved.
Sure. Uh, so the motion is to direct the administration to develop a request for proposals based on the proposal. In consult in consultation with the finance subcommittee and to put it out for bid. So.
I'll second.
Okay. So, um, the proposal, I won't read it. Is there another hand? Sorry, Julia. No. All right. I won't read it verbatim. I'll I'll touch on some of the the main points. Um, so again, this is the proposal that was made on. December 22nd. And, um. It's basically to. Put out a request for proposal for a synthetic track. With a natural grass. Uh, turf field. In the center of the track, positioned between the administration building and the current school building. So where we had been talking about putting a synthetic turf field. This instead would be a natural grass turf field with a track around it. There were a number of reasons that I put forward, uh, to the finance subcommittee, why this would make sense at this particular time. One was that we had a lot more information from various other projects that were, um. Ongoing in other communities and some of the concerns that have been raised by those communities as well as by members of our own community. We've had the opportunity to learn about new techniques for growing natural grass and to better understand the science of what a modern grass. Field really is and what that might look like in our environment. Um, we have been working on professionally maintaining our current fields and are committed to, um, improving. The six grass fields and the four, uh, diamonds that we have on campus. We've been working with PJC Organics. We've developed, uh, we've been developing the expertise required to sustain. Premium grass fields with safer terrain and increased playability. We've learned that a modern grass field, and here I am reading, um, properly constructed and maintained will yield a level of playability. Commensurate with the needs of a middle or high school, um, a middle high school our size. And that's one of the things that we continue to talk about today. We'll get back to that. Should we proceed with a modern natural grass field inside a synthetic track? We would have the ability to move forward almost immediately without opposition. From the community. That is our expectation. And, uh, the savings realized between synthetic and modern natural grass fields, along with the expertise developed by our staff can potentially be invested. In other district, school and community fields. So we talked about that as well. That, um, we're building, um. We're building, um, a resource here that will benefit the entire school. The entire campus, our other potentially our other schools and and potentially our town communities as well. So. The conclusion, which I'll read again, this is not just about the risks of a synthetic turf or the political expediency of getting this done. It is also about the benefits of creating a first class, fully organic campus. With a staff that can both model and share best practices with the rest of our district. A properly constructed and maintained grass field should be able to meet the playability needs of the district. It will also enable us to take other fields offline for reconstruction with a goal of having all seven fields as well as. Our baseball and softball fields achieving maximum playability of modern grass fields. So, um, there was further discussion, um, but as you know, the motion did pass and, um. I'll leave it at that. We can talk about that. We can talk about what was discussed today if you prefer to do that. Prior to a vote on this motion, I think that would be appropriate as well. Yeah, Jose.
I'm gonna give up my virtual hand and just use the the real, the the organic one. No, I I appreciate. I just wanted to say thank you to you and to the finance subcommittee. Um, including Joe for the tremendous work that went into, um. This proposal, including deliberation, community feedback, um, and ultimately what we what we have before us. So I'm very grateful. Uh, I've got two questions. That may be relevant to the proposal or certainly, you know, exists within the the periphery of the proposal. One is the issue of irrigation, the ongoing challenge of irrigation that the fields have. I don't know whether that can be incorporated into aspects of this design or, you know, what we can can expect. Back from from a design. Uh, and the second question, having, I think, listened to the the one of the subcommittee finance subcommittee meetings was regarding. The potential savings that the district. Would see by going the organic turf route. And those savings with permission by the college could see some of the gift be used to. Uh, repairing, maintaining, revitalizing some of the playing services within the elementary school, uh, campuses. I don't know if that that there's been an update on that. That seems separate from this proposal, but I wanted to to bring that up as as something that was discussed.
Right. Um, Joe, do you want to speak to the irrigation question?
On the irrigation question, if if we're going to install a a natural grass field. It makes all the sense in the world to have built in irrigation for that field. That is separate from the question of drilling. A new well for the purpose of irrigation of fields generally. It's also separate from, um. Developing enough infrastructure to be able to have portable water cannon type irrigation for. Other parts of the campus. I would recommend, given all that we know now, that yes, we we should do all three. And we should, we should make those an integral part of what we do. No matter how we move forward. So.
And just just to follow up briefly, I think so. Um, would that be a part of? The proposal that we would be. Or the 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 design that we would be requesting. The all three, basically. Could that be made a part of our request?
Built in irrigation for the new field would definitely be a part of what would be expected of the design team that would be responding to the RFP. The the process of of drilling. A new well, that's something that's probably best parsed out for a local engineering firm that could. Go through the necessary surveys, test wells. And then actually guiding the the construction of those wells and and the the pipes necessary to then run water to other parts of the campus. Financially and just from a implementation perspective, it makes sense to have that be something that happens. Concurrent, but probably separate. The purchase of water cannons for the purpose of irrigating the rest of our fields on the Mount Greylock campus. That's something that that is much more of a product purchase as opposed to a design. Effort by a by a landscape architect. So the district would coordinate those those three.
Yeah, I think. Thank you, Joe. I think, uh, as you spoke, I realized that, uh, wasn't the best question I asked you, but the but the, I think where I was getting at is that the. Nature of these improvements and purchases. All fall within the remit of our agreement with the college in terms of, uh, the appropriate use of of the gift.
Yes, all of those are for the purpose of of upgrading or maintaining the capital. The the campus at Mount Greylock.
So Jose, to your second question about the elementary schools, would someone else on the finance subcommittee like to speak to that Ursula or Steve? Want to elaborate on the discussions that we've had?
You were asking about maintenance of the fields at the elementary schools, Jose? Yeah, um. I I asked a question during the finance subcommittee meeting about maintenance of the new field at Greylock because it sounded like there would be. I don't want to say significant upkeep like in a negative way, but there would be, you know, uh, maintenance that we have to do on our our nice new field. And Joe was mentioning that we have a custodian at Greylock who, um, is very knowledgeable and spends a lot of time. Dealing with the fields and the outdoor spaces and all that. Um, and he's actually in school for that. Uh, subject now. So we did have a little bit of a discussion around the elementary schools and like the last in field, um, complex in Lanesboro. And potentially looking at overall, you know, our district wide field. Setup at some point and how we can best use the resources that we have to maintain. All of those fields, right? I mean, I think right now what you mentioned, Joe, was that the town mows the fields, but that's really the. All that's done from the perspective of the elementary school fields, um, with the exception of, you know, parents and community members stepping in. And my thought was it would be really nice if if we had someone who. You know, we could maintain all the fields. In the same way and 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 keep them all. I know parents paint the lines and put up the fences and all that stuff. It'd be really nice if as a district we could. Figure out a way to take care of all of our fields. Um, you know, but Joe made the point. It's funny because it's Mount Greylock. It's like you have the Mount Greylock sports happening at the Mount Greylock field versus at the elementary schools, a little bit different. It's like the town sports. So I understand, but also. I do agree. I assume that's why you were asking, but I would love to see how as a district we could. Put some more care into all of our fields with the resources that we have.
Yeah, I just, I think that's great. I think the, you know, given the clear interests in playing surfaces. Yep. Across both of our towns, and I'll speak specifically for Williamstown. And given that the district fields are really the only real playing fields that the town of Williamstown has, I would hope that the town would be. Enthusiastic partners in helping to revitalize, maintain, uh, the fields that the district provides for for the town.
Other questions or comments? Are we ready for a vote? Okay. We'll call vote.
Owen. I.
Henry, I.
Sorry, the Julius pauses gave me.
I'm just like, do I remember the exact motion, but I'm voting for natural grass surrounded by an artificial track.
Synthetic track, yeah. Yeah.
I'm sincere, I.
Um, am I next? Yeah, green eye.
Malloy, I.
Uh, Mill, I was trying to say something before we voted. Can I just say something as I vote?
Sorry, Steve. I didn't see your hand there. Um.
No, that's that's fine.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I am abstaining because I I cannot vote until I know what the playable hours will be for everything. So thank you.
Okay, so that motion passes. Sorry, what are we? We're six tonight. So five in favor, one abstention. So that is now, um, the direction that the administration needs in order to continue the conversation. So that is now the direction that the administration needs in order to continue the conversations about this project. Joe, do you want to talk about some of the information that you shared with us, or shall I read through some of the minutes regarding the information we got from PJC Organics or from Huntress? Or does the committee feel the need to talk about that any further right now?
Um, Carrie, I did want to point out, we were able to get the meeting minutes from today into the packet. So I think if people refresh the link, it'll, it'll pop up.
Okay, terrific. Then we're probably all set. Great. Turn it back to you, Christina. Thanks everyone.
Thank you, Carrie. Next up on the agenda is the business administrative report, and I will turn it over to Joe Bergeron.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to endeavor to share my screen for the FY22 Q2 update. And all right, can you all see this document on your screen now? Great. So themes for the update, we've had a lot more pandemic than we had ever hoped as we were coming into this school year. Thankfully, though, if this is a financial update, the costs have been carried far more by our people than they have by, by finances. People have showed up, they volunteered, they've kept things moving forward, no matter, no matter what it's taken. That said, you know, district operations, revenue and spending, they've been largely normal. But we've battled through constant availability difficulties. Our food services team, in terms of procuring the food necessary to feed our students, they've managed delays, cancellations of deliveries in, in ways that are really Herculean, and I cannot thank them enough for what they're doing. Classroom supplies, we, we still have supplies that we ordered in June and July showing up right now. Anything with a chip. So whether it's a, an attempt to purchase a vehicle or projectors or Chromebooks, we're seeing timelines that stretch out four, five, six, whoever knows how many months with some of these items. So it's been, it's been extraordinary, the, the work that our team has, has done to navigate that. We've had physical plant challenges that are all normal, you know, in terms of things breaking down mid-year and needing to be repaired or replaced. The timing of replacement parts and the struggle to try to, try to select and procure things that are going to suit the long-term needs, but also just available in the present, that has been, that has been challenging. I mentioned food services up above, but we're operating within a wonderful USDA program that has allowed us to offer students meals at no cost this year, the same way we did last year. That said, the subsidies don't equal costs, and the demand for meals has fluctuated greatly. I think as, as parents have sent their students into school and the students' tastes and needs and things that they've been interested in have, have evolved. And that does mean that we, that we're currently running a $40,000 deficit between the revenue that we're receiving from the USDA and the expenditures that we're making just in order to, to keep operational in, in the way we need to. And so that's something that we're keeping an eye on, and that I'm sure as we move towards the end of this year, we will, we will be letting you know how that, how that is evolving over time. And then evolving pandemic and student needs to support their educational needs and, and maintain operations. I mean, that's another area where in a couple of slides from now, you, you'll see the ways that we've, that we've increased staffing mid-year in order to support the needs of students. But all of this, I really just want to thank our building staff, especially our facilities and food services staff that, that we don't often hear about within these meetings. They've really done an amazing job of carrying us through this year, and all staff have stepped up and volunteered for things to be able to keep us, keep us running. So I think that, that's really the highlight. But it's also the, the foundation for everything that, that we've been able to do this year, keeping school as normal as we can amidst times that have been anything but. In terms of revenue, the, the rest of this is broken down by revenue and expenditure. Our stable, we've had stable local town and state and federal funding. They've, everybody within that regard, bottom to top, has been fantastic. All of our funds have been received per assessments, $9 million so far in operating assessments received and $750,000 in, in the capital. Assessments for Mount Greylock Regional School have been received. All of our Chapter 70 and other state aid tuition student enrollment, and therefore revenue slightly higher than expected, which has been, which has been great. It also means that Hancock and New Ashford have seen a little bit of an influx of students relative to what we had, what we had originally projected or thought. That has been good news for us and our schools. And then grant funding is still far stronger than expected as we laid out the budget for FY22 originally. Our budget had planned for $1 million in grant spending. That was laid out in March. The actual funds available are closer to $2.5 million at this point. That's edged up a little bit more since Q1 with additional funding both becoming available through grants, but also we've been able to successfully compete for competitive grants that have been posted and that our district staff have been able to complete the application hurdles for and, and receive. There is a multi-year availability window for most of those funds, which means you're, you're provided those funds in one year and you're allowed to draw them down over the course of two or three or even four years. That expanded set of funding is definitely something that, as we're looking at the FY23 and then FY24 budgets, we're trying to make sure that we set up a sustainable structure for after those grant funds that are relief-oriented are no longer available. How do we make sure that, for instance, if we do create additional FTEs within our school buildings, how do we make sure that those positions are sustainable as opposed to us having trouble continuing them once the expanded grant funding of the American Rescue Plan Act have gone away? And so that's, that's going to be, I think, something that you'll see in February and March from us as we, as we talk through how we can best satisfy the requests from the buildings and, and from the district as a whole. That's going to be a balancing act that, that we're going to be putting out in front of you. Expenditures thus far, $11.4 million spent thus far, which is on track with the FY22 budget with the following exceptions. And we had already reported in Q1 that we needed to add a classroom teacher at Lanesboro Elementary School and a classroom teacher at Williamstown Elementary School. Those were, those were hires that were made to, to split classes into smaller sections, both as a result of COVID requirements, but also an influx of students across the district and, and the needs, the needs that we had to be able to best serve them. In Q2, we've added a board certified behavioral analyst at Williamstown Elementary and additional staff for the front office at Wes. Nurse support at Mount Greylock in order to handle the, the volume of COVID-related activity that, that we've had in, in our largest school. And we've had part-time custodial support that we've tapped into at, at all three schools. The substitute lines, they all remain areas of concern, you know, as, as we read the headlines about school closures due to staffing shortages or people just not being able to, to identify and, and bring in enough substitutes. I, I think that's something where so far we've been in good shape, relatively good shape. But it's an area where both from an operating as well as a financial perspective, we're, we're constantly paying attention to. And, and the team across the board is, is making sure to prioritize how we, how we main, how we maintain operating capability in, in all of those areas. So that's split across COVID requirements, new student needs, and developing our own structures with this administrative team to be able to best support our students. Outside of the world of staff, contracted services, we have had a couple of out-of-district tuition needs that, that have come up, that we have needed to support financially that have been higher than expected. And, and some contracted services brought into the district in order to support specific student needs. So we, we are seeing peaks and valleys within, within where we're needing to allocate funds. But the grant funding that, that we have in front of us, as well as our revolving accounts, accounts will very comfortably support all of our past and future expenses here this year. This is, this is not a situation where we need to, to turn to any other sort of financial support or, or request. And that said, we're remaining sensitive to, to what this looks like as we look in FY23 and FY24, trying to, trying to pull out of all of this stronger than the way we went in. So that's the whirlwind Q2 tour at a high level. Now I'll open it up to questions. Steve?
I, yes, just, just for completeness, I'm just going to ask the question I asked at the finance subcommittee meeting, just to get it on the records here. Can you just talk a little bit about the impact of inflation? And you're going forward, what this might be doing for future budgets?
Yes. Impact of, we're relatively shielded from the impact of inflation, given that we're, we purchase most things on state contracts that have bid cycles that are, that are separate from immediate vendor cost increases. That said, I think we, we will see increases in a variety of areas as we move into next year, notably food, school classroom supplies, and perhaps some technology areas that we constantly need to invest in. But what we've, what we've seen this year within FY22 is much more a hit to availability and, and timing and being able to get things in reliably as opposed to significant increases in costs. The one area where, where we have definitely seen cost increases, in cost increases in ways that we, we did not foresee is with the facilities building, as we talked about during the school committee meeting in December, I believe it was. All responses to our RFPs for the facilities building on the Mount Greylock Regional School campus came in significantly higher than, than we had predicted. And, and that's one area where, where we've been at, at the mercy of cost increases right now. Julia?
Hi. Thank you for that update. And I'm aware that it's, we're, we shall be grateful for the fact that there's grants that support us through this difficult time and the additional costs. And that there actually are some problems that can be solved with hiring some people. Sometimes throwing money at something doesn't actually help. But I guess my question is, maybe more of a technical nature, when, when you are hiring staff that are meeting a particular need during this time, I just wonder from a, I, like contractual basis, is it clear that that is a time-limited position? Or are we opening ourselves up for difficulty in cutting that position when we no longer have to run COVID tests, you know, as often as we do, or, or whatever the positions are?
There are no positions that we have hired for this year that, that are not considered sustainable, given, given how we're, how we're operating. The, the places where we've had to go significantly beyond what we had previously predicted were those out-of-district tuitions and, and some contracted services areas. Those are not commitments beyond this year, but they're also based on individual student needs that, that we really do need to serve. So, you know, other things would need to be cut before those would, if it came to it, but, but that's not, that's not where we are this year. And I think those needs are always evolving. And so as we look towards next year, there are no guarantees that that's, that's the picture that we'll need to continue with either. Does that answer your question?
I think I heard you say that no positions have been hired that you don't anticipate sustaining in future years.
So. Yes, that is correct.
So like additional staffing to support nursing because we're doing COVID tests, for example?
So those, those are short-term contracts, contracted services? Yeah, sorry.
That, that's.
And then the.
Yeah.
I meant like the full-time staff that we've, that we've hired this year. So classroom teachers.
Yes.
Yeah, those are not, and, and I wanted, I wanted to very quickly make that clear for everybody watching, that, that's. Anybody else? Not seeing any virtual or, Jose, you called it organic? Oh, Carrie.
Yeah. Sorry, I had to step off for a minute. So if this, if someone has already asked this, just tell me and I'll watch the tape. But the school lunches, it's, it's not unusual to be in a deficit from school lunch, but that's a, a rather large one. And I know you said we can cover it, it's not a problem. But I'm just wondering what the rationale was for not charging for lunch a second year in a row? Was it because we were getting an increased subsidy from the state or because we considered that it would be a hardship for the families to pay for school lunch? If you could just talk about that a little bit.
The, the simplest answer, I think, is that the USDA continued its program of encouraging schools to offer lunches at no cost to their students, and that the USDA funding for that program continued into, into this year. So it, it, it isn't as though we said we unilaterally are not going to charge for, for meals this year. Instead, it's being a part of that USDA program that is designed to make sure that all students coming to our buildings can have that meal or those meals each day, Monday through Friday.
Great, thank you.
All right. I don't think there was anything else under my agenda item, so I think I can turn it back to you, Christina.
I think there was tuition rate discussion, but I'm not sure that we have anything in that realm right now.
Yes, and I think that's one that we're going to defer until February, just because we're, we're trying to make sure that we're sensitive to the fact that it's a, it's a multiple-town, multiple-member type discussion, and so we're trying to, trying to tread lightly there.
The agreement, the agreements are in the packet so that you can see, and just brief word of history, you, you will see through the two agreements with New Ashford and with Hancock, how the payments are supposed to be structured. Just again, to tuck away for February, we agreed mutually among our entity and those two entities last year to a 3% increase. FY21 was a, or FY22 is a 3% increase over FY21 because we simply did not anticipate, again, not having the data available from the state that allows us to do the, the super, the super fine point agreement that, that, that the agreement calls for. So, so we've, we've had several good conversations with, with Dr. Phillips, who is the Hancock and, and New Ashford superintendent, and, and we'll be ready to, to bring more detail forward on that in February.
Thank you. I think you're off the hook now, Joe. Next up on the agenda is the superintendent report, so I turn it back over to Dr. McCandless.
Very good, well, thank you. And. Very good. Well, thank you. And Joe is never far off the hook has been my my observation of working with Joe for over a year now. So but glad we could we could give you a five minute break on this one, Joe. I'm going to do a quick screen share and try to get the right screen of my many tabs up here for this. Everybody see that? Yeah, thank you for the nods, everyone. But before I get into the to the more formal report, which is really just in in keeping with the way our our school days have gone since we've gotten back from break. This whole report is kind of all COVID all the time, which is what the schools felt like here over the past couple of weeks. I do just want to say a huge thank you and a real congratulations and well done to Jacqueline Vanette, who is the our band director at Mount Greylock Regional School and to all of her student musicians. We had a live in person concert last night. It was it was their their second concert of the year. We have orchestra and chorus coming up for their second concert later this month. But last night was a very special concert. Was a farewell and thank you concert to Mr. Linden Moores, who was the band director for, I believe, twenty nine years of Mount Greylock High School. And Mr. Moores retired the year that COVID hit. So on Friday, March thirteenth, twenty nineteen, the plans that had been ongoing to have a really big, good farewell concert, including alumnus alumni participation for for Mr. Moores as a send off. Those those plans really just stopped in their tracks overnight. And last night was an opportunity to to say thank you to Mr. Moores for almost three decades of service and bringing beauty through music to to our two communities. It was a lovely concert. Mr. Moores actually guest conducted a couple of pieces, one of which was a piece that was written for the occasion by his wife, Joan DeVoe, who I understand was probably also an employee of the school district and served kids for almost thirty years. Song entitled Farewell and Thank You, which was quite lovely. And the the whole band, the middle school band, the jazz band, which did the center part of the concert, and then the the high school concert band, just complex, complicated, beautiful pieces of music. And it was just a complete pleasure to get together with with families and parents and grandparents and well wishers in a very safe way in the auditorium last night. So congratulations to Jackie and congratulations to all of our brilliant student musicians for just bringing a lot of brightness and a lot of joy to a to a winter evening last night. And congratulations to Mr. Moores. And thank you for for coming back and sharing that evening. And I would be remiss to to not mention that Troy McCalick, who is a a teaching assistant with Ms. Vanette, was conducted two pieces with the with the middle school concert band, which were also quite brilliant. And so just a very special evening. And we're all very grateful to the folks that make music and make art here in the district. And so with that, I'll move into my formal superintendent's report, which is all COVID related. We do want to talk a little bit about, you know, catching up on where we are relative to COVID. And and Jose, I really hope that wasn't rude of me at the beginning of the meeting. If it was, I I truly apologize. We just knew that we had a spot that was custom made for that. And 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 so we can, we can certainly talk about that after the presentation and welcome the opportunity. So you can see that our case numbers, the week of vacation, the week after vacation, the week of January third through January seventh is when we hit sort of our high watermark in terms of COVID cases, particularly at Mount Greylock Regional School and at last. And you can see where we are as of the end is as we hit the end of this week. We, you know, it's 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 not missed on all of us that do this work day in, day out, that the thought of having forty three cases at this point last year would have been absolutely unthinkable as we were in and out of in person school and on staggered schedules. I think the fact that that we have learned a lot about COVID in the past eighteen or nineteen months. And we have learned a lot about the power of being vaccinated and boosted for those for whom that's available. We have just learned a lot. The primary lesson being that that we can actually do this and provide real school for kids in a in a pretty full time basis and do so safely, even when we're experiencing cases. And so we're very grateful to everybody who who takes this seriously. We're grateful to everybody that that follows recommendations. And and we we ask folks to really consider if if you're not following some of the recommendations around around vaccination, around masking, around other things that we know keep people safe. Please consider doing so. Our case numbers are are consistent with other districts in the region and in the state. We look at comparing ourselves regionally and across the state weekly. Our cases do tend to be related to outside of school activities. We we take our mitigation efforts in the school seriously. And and we just have found over months and months and months that most of the cases that we're experiencing are related to something that happened outside of school. We continue and will continue our weekly pulled testing at all three of the schools. And we encourage all of our families to please sign up for testing. All of our families have had this link multiple times. Since we've gotten back from the holiday break, we have certainly seen an uptick in a couple of things. One is just the number of students whose families have signed them up to be a part of the pool testing. And particularly at the middle and high school, where we test students very early in the morning as they're coming in school. You've seen a definite uptick in the number of students who have always been signed up that who are now actually taking the time to be a part of the poll test program. And we're very grateful to everybody that makes that work, a particular nod to Joe, who for for every part of the poll testing program that that the rest of us see. There's an awful lot of work that we don't see that that Joe completes and that Stacy Vajard, our executive assistant, does. And so we're just very grateful to those two in particular, but to everybody who helps make this poll testing program work. To learn more about our testing program, we encourage folks to just go to the Broad Institute website. There's a link to it here. There's videos that show the machinery, the robots that that help with some of this work, talks about their process, talks exactly about how pool testing works and the logic behind it. So even if you just want to Google CIC Broad Institute testing in Massachusetts, you can really learn a lot about that. And again, we encourage our families to please take advantage of this old testing program where your child can be tested once a week. It takes probably less than a minute for for each individual child to go through and do this. Just a little change in something that we talked about in December. In December, we discussed phasing out our test and stay program for the near future. In fact, we were going to phase out test and stay as of January seventeenth. Test and stay for anybody that doesn't quite remember what that is. That means that if you've had a close contact and an exposure to a COVID positive individual, rather than quarantining yourself and not being able to come to school, you have an option to come to school, but simply take a binax now rapid test before progressing from the testing area into the wider school space. We've had a lot of students take advantage of that. It saved a lot of school days. It saved thousands and thousands and thousands of school hours across the state. And we, although we, it's it's very labor intensive. And you know, and it and it's primarily for folks that are not vaccinated. And we again do encourage everybody who can be vaccinated to please be vaccinated. We do not think now is the appropriate time to phase out that test and stay program. So we will be continuing that for the foreseeable future. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education mask requirement will has been extended through February twenty eight. So we're going out about another month and a half where the masks are required. There will be a link in this report in the minutes to to actually see the letter that extends the requirement. I have a hunch that that may get extended once again because this that February twenty eight brings us right up to the to where February break ends and then and the new school week starts. And if history has taught us anything over the course of COVID, it is that we we see a rise in cases when we have students out of school and understandably so. Masks continue to be required for all indoor sporting events, both for participants and athletes. And that also includes coaches and referees. Masks continue not only by DUCI regulation and our own regulation, but through Federal Department of Transportation regulation. Masks continue to be required on school buses. And masks should fit well, as we know, and should cover the mouth and the nose at the same time. Just today, we were again reminded, I've already said it, that the MIA will continue to require masks for all indoor athletics. And this, you know, full disclosure to the people that we serve here in our community. There is what the Commissioner of Education, Mr. Riley refers to as an off ramp for communities to to stop wearing masks in school. That is when eighty percent of your staff and students are vaccinated. You you can go to the state and request that you are allowed to unmask. As superintendent of the Mount Greylock Regional School District, I don't see us doing that. I think we will, we will keep the masks until we are really truly at a point where we are are closer to ninety five percent of our students and our faculty are vaccinated. And until we get, you know, guidance from the CDC, from from the Mass Department of Health and from the the local physicians that have so so freely given of their very limited time to help us understand all of this. I would not anticipate that even when we reach that eighty percent, which we have not quite. I still don't anticipate that we will be removing our masks. It just does not seem to make sense to me at this time. There are, as I'm sure all of you know, or most of you know, new CDC, Mass Department of Health and Mass DUCI protocols or close contacts. I put together six or seven slides that laid out in fine detail all of those protocols. I have to tell you, in going through them and going through them and going through them again, I was starting to confuse myself. I just so I did include a link on this, which takes you to a flow chart that graphically and with with some words helps explain. These flow charts, the new requirements, which take a quarantine period from ten days down to five days. It's all aimed at several ends, and there are ends that we fully support here in our district. The the primary end is to keep students, staff, the families who 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 grace us and gift us with their students and the communities that we're honored to serve. The the real aim is to keep all of those folks safe. And within that keeping safe are some some very important aims. We want to minimize the amount of time that an individual student is out of school. We certainly want to minimize any corporate closing of schools, i.e. closing a classroom, closing a grade level. We want to avoid that almost at all costs unless we have striking evidence that that spread is happening because of something that is going on in school. We need to allow our healthcare professionals and our healthcare facilities, many of whom are our parents and guardians in this district. We need to allow them to to keep pace with with individuals who are sick, whether they're sick with COVID or not with COVID. It's really important that we keep school open. So those healthcare professionals who live in our communities can can continue to go to work to care for everybody. It's similarly important that all of our parents, that school is open. So all of our parents, all of our guardians, all of our caretakers can do what they need to do during the day to to earn money to care for their families. And then, you know, just as important as all of these things is maximizing student opportunities to have a as normal of a school experience as they can. We're certainly have the guardrails of what is allowable and what makes sense. But as was evidenced last night at our concert, as is evidenced by Ms. Sheehy shared that the musical is is going on. Our after school activities are happening. Rehearsals for the middle and high school musical maybe happening as we speak. I don't know on this day. But but we really want our students to have as much of a normal school experience as they can have within the confines of the times. And so for all of these reasons, we eagerly accept these new protocols and eagerly take on the challenges of pool testing and test and stay and and pretty consistently reminding people that we're all in this together as a community. All of this is just a lot. It's a lot to take in. It's a lot to process as a parent. It's a lot to process as a professional and as an educator. And I do just want the community to understand that our school nurses, our administrators at the school level or district level administrators, all of us are more than happy to have conversations and answer questions about the the protocols we have in place, the safety measures we have in place, and anything else related to the pandemic or anything in general. Our nurses really need to take a moment to focus in on thanking them. Our nurses are very expert at at what they do and what we do together. They're very expert at when we need to do things related to COVID, how we need to do things. And they're very, very expert at explaining the why to those of us that are not healthcare professionals. We're very grateful to our school nurses. We're very grateful to the substitute nurses that come in and help us out. School nurses across the state and across the country are in a spotlight that not many of them went into the business of being school nurses in order to be at that bright of a spotlight. But certainly across the country, across the Commonwealth, and I know for certain here locally, our nurses have just stepped up time and time again and have been invaluable partners during really challenging times and keeping kids safe, keeping all of us informed and keeping everybody, for lack of a more elegant term, just calmed down and approaching this in in a reasonable and informed ways. And we're very grateful to all of them. We're similarly grateful to our our local public health nurses, to our to the nurses that work for Berkshire Regional Planning Commission and help set up these vaccine clinics and and who help advise us. We're very grateful to DUCI and the folks that that staff the COVID hotline, who are really available almost twenty four hours a day. We're very grateful to our local health departments and our local health agents. All of these folks, almost any time of day or night, or just a phone call, a text, an email away. And we're very, very grateful for that work. And so with that, I would be happy to have any and all questions and and start with Jose, if you'd like to, Jose.
Thank you, Jake. I I'll apologize in advance for the noise here in the background. I'm solo parenting. So you're definitely hearing a kingdom being built behind me.
Thought I saw your background moving a little bit there. I was, I was wishing it was in clearer focus for our entertainment value.
It's distracting in many ways.
No apologies needed, please.
But the, the question, and I'll, I'll ask these folks to hit pause for a second, one second. Thanks, Jake. Just to get the question out, the question that I posed to Cindy, I hope you remember. The noise levels are increasing, but it was regarding, is regarding a, parents were concerned with a potential breach in COVID safety protocols that have occurred at Williamstown Elementary. And I'm just hoping you could speak to that, to the concerns that some of our parents, the concerns that they have. And maybe just remind us of what the, our current protocols and policies are.
Yeah, I, I would first and foremost say, you know, if a parent has a concern or a child goes home and expresses a concern, please, please reach out and let us know. You know, call a principal, call Mr. Poro, get ahold of Joe, let me know because we really want to address these, these in real time. And, you know, our, our, to put our protocols in, in the most simplest terms, every single person in the building, unless they are excused for a behavioral reason or a medical reason from wearing a mask. And we really have almost, I don't believe we have any exceptions of that nature. Everybody, children and adults included, are to be masked the entire time they're in school with the exceptions of, of planned mask, mask breaks, which should either happen in a hallway by oneself or outside. Or if somebody is eating or drinking and they are at least three feet apart. With, we certainly in the buildings, you know, we, we do observe times when, when masks have slipped below noses. We see people maybe taking a mask break in a space and in a way they shouldn't be. There are conversations happening every day about the importance of, of keeping up and keeping faithful to wear, to wearing masks in the right way. And so I, I would just encourage really anybody who, who has a concern, if, if it's a general concern or a very specific individualized concern, to, to please let somebody know, Cindy Nolan, Travis, myself, Jake, Alan, Joe. Just let, let us know because we will address that.
Thank you, Jake. And then apology, Stephen, just a follow-up. I didn't see the, the, and I may have missed it with what's going on in the background here. The latest vaccination rates for our staff. In previous reports or presentations, we got very, I think, comforting and, and confidence building numbers for the rates at the Mount Greylock Middle and High School, as well as Lanesboro Elementary. Williamstown Elementary, I think, certainly from my perspective, there was a desire to see that number improve. But I don't know if you, you have an update for us about how those numbers have been, have, have adjusted?
I do not, I did not include that in the report tonight and I do not have that in front of me. I, I don't know. I see, I see Joe doing something there. I don't, I, I suspect I know what he's doing. So Joe may be able to pull that up and provide some, some better insight into that. I, I will suggest, Jose, that, that we are at a point where we are working with our Educators Association, our union, to look at, at ramping up a, a requirement that for, for individuals to be vaccinated. And we will be talking more about that in February. And if we, if we can get that information for you anytime that we're here still this evening, Joe, do you have it?
Eighty-five percent. So it's up from eighty-one point nine percent to eighty-five percent. So that, that's the, you know, it's, it's in addition of two people that have just submitted, submitted data. It, it, it is in the change in, in percentage of people who are actually vaccinated, I don't think. So I think that's, that's one of the areas where we're seeing with the elementary schools right now is that we're, we're continuing to make pleas to, to receive information. It's optionally shared, but at the same time, it is important for all of us in knowing how to, how to go about making decisions and trying to keep schools open.
Thank you, John.
And I will add, we, we did, those, those of you who are parents in the district, maybe you saw the email, maybe you didn't, but we did send out an email this afternoon. Just, just making several points, one of which is that if, if your child is vaccinated, please, please get that information to us by, by way of taking a picture of the vaccination record and, and, and sending it either to the school nurse at Mount Greylock or to the vaccinations website at the two elementary schools. And just to, we'll take the opportunity to say, we really need to know if your family has COVID. We, we occasionally, look, when you, when you work in a place that has like four-year-olds and five-year-olds, sometimes you hear things that may or may not have been, you know, meant to be heard publicly. That, that also happens with, with older students. But it's, it's really important that we, you know, and it's not about judging anybody. Goodness knows with, with Omicron. I, I don't know that, that any of us will be able to avoid it ultimately. But, but it's really important we are aware of, of who had, who had COVID and when so that, so that we can help advise and, and do the right things to help keep the whole community and individual families safe. Steve, I see your hand up patiently.
Oh, can you see that it's patiently? Sorry.
I, I was, I was guessing. I was guessing it was patient.
Okay. So first of all, repeating what everyone has said, I just wanted to thank you, Joe, the nurses, everyone who's been doing all of the hard work, the teachers, the unions, you know, the staff, everyone. I, it is appreciated just how much time is being spent on all of this. And I wanted to just circle back to something that you had said that it's very different now than it was a year ago when we see these cases and we know a lot more now than we did then. And so some of the people I would also like to thank are the people at the state who are giving us guidelines. But when you talk to them, if you could put in a request, if they could add some references to scientific literature to explain why they are making these recommendations and not others, that would be extremely valuable. The reason I'm bringing this up is that you're early in the pandemic when we didn't really know what was going on. Some of our policies included having masks for kids outdoors and wearing gaiters. And then very quickly, we realized the scientific literature was that the gaiters do not provide really any protection to an airborne virus like this. They help a little bit with the droplets and the spreads. And so when DUCI is giving us recommendations about what we should do, it would really help if they could cite scientific studies saying, this is why we believe now this is what should be done.
We'll certainly make their recommendation. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you so much for that report. Next up on the agenda is the School Committee Chair Report. So I guess that means I have to talk now. So what we wanted to talk about here is the School Committee Retreat, which is coming up on January twenty-ninth for our school committee. It's a remote meeting. And essentially I, I wanted to give a brief update about where we stand with the retreat planning for January. Carrie, Jake and I have been meeting almost weekly with the facilitator of that retreat, Abby Yano. And the process has been collaborative and it is basically configured, the retreat is going to be configured to address the issues of the school committee. And I have in front of me some of the, the five desired outcomes we've identified. The first one is getting to know each other a little better on a social level, which is something that as we've moved into the virtual world and some of the members have only ever participated in school committee meetings virtually, we miss out on some of the ability prior to a meeting or after a meeting to sort of get to know each other on a social level. Two is a shared agreement of the internal purpose of the school committee. Three is a shared understanding of the results of the survey that went out a month ago and everyone has responded to. Four is identifying and sharing agreement of our norms, the behaviors during the meeting to make sure we work together effectively. And the fifth one is clarity and agreement on how are we going to hold each other accountable to the norms that we agree upon? Does anybody have any questions before I move on to the questions that we've outlined to discuss during the retreat? I don't want to throw a ton of information at everybody else. Okay, so the questions we've outlined to discuss are, one, what is the purpose of the school committee in terms of the superintendent and committee members? Two, collective sense-making of the survey results. So what stands out from those results for the school committee? Three, it appears that some people are having different experiences on the school committee and what sense do we all make of those different experiences? Four, what does that mean for how you are operating as a team or a committee? Is there anything we want to do differently? Five, what norms do we need to implement in order to improve our working relationships to become a more high-performing team and committee? And six, how are we going to hold each other accountable to the norms? How do we do that given the context of a public meeting? I think it's important to frame that, you know, we've talked about these various areas in different, at different times. And this will be a great opportunity to bring these up that as we start to solidify some of these norms and as, you know, we know that the makeup of school committees change and administrations change by developing these norms, it will really help us as the committee sort of fluidly changes over a great period of time. The idea being it only benefits the district as a whole, you know, for years to come. And I really want to thank Carrie and Jake and Abby for the time that we've been spending trying to pull this together. And for all of you for taking the survey. So that's it, unless anyone has any questions. Jose.
Not a question. You, you were thanking everyone else and I, and I, I feel compelled to thank you, Christina, because you're a part of that, those efforts too. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Jose. Okay, next up on the agenda, upcoming meetings. There is a finance subcommittee meeting, January twenty-seventh at four PM. The school committee retreat we just mentioned, January twenty-ninth at nine AM. The finance subcommittee meets again February tenth at four PM. And the next regular session for the school committee is February tenth at six PM. I have no items for discussion. Any agenda requests for the February tenth meeting? Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn? I think Julia made the motion. Carrie, do you want a second? Carrie, seconds. All in favor? Conry, I.
Constancy, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I. I just wanted to make a comment because you didn't give us a chance for discussion.
Okay.
So I just wanted to, you know, thank everybody. This meeting was, you know, under two and a half hours and we covered a tremendous amount of substance, including a lot of, you know, really good detailed data about various things. And this was a very efficiently run meeting. And it was, you know, good to have all of this stuff here and to hear from so many voices.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
This meeting is adjourned at eight seventeen PM.
Bye, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.